Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board. Today is Monday, January 6, 2020, and it is, I messed up my time, 7:33 PM. Announcement is being made, the adequate notice of this meeting has been given that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 ATSEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Under correspondence, we have letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 6, 2020, reappointing Jennifer Vealy as a Class II member of the Planning Board for a term ending December 31, 2020. A letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 6, 2020, reappointing John Von Aiken as a Class IV member of the Planning Board for a term end in December 31, 2023. Letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 6, 2020, reappointing Dominic Mealy as a Class IV member of the Planning Board for a term end in December 31, 2023. And finally, a letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 6, 2020, reappointing Stephen Mendel as alternate number one of the Planning Board for a term end in December 31, 2021. And we'll have...
Seeing as Mayor Soriano is here, I think we'll yield the swearing-in duties to him. Mayor Soriano?
Hello, gentlemen. Please stand up, Jennifer. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
I, Jennifer Vealy.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Class III.
And justly perform all the duties of the Office of the Planning Board Class II.
Here, oh hello, Class II, Jennifer. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Dominic, please stand. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
I, Dominic Mealy.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Class IV.
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Class IV.
Or according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mendel. That was just too much fun. That was too easy. I'm sorry. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephen Mendel.
I, Stephen Mendel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God. I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Alternate Number One.
That I will partially and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Alternate Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Mr. Von Aiken, please rise.
Yes, sir.
And raise your right hand. Robbie, pay attention.
I, John Von Aiken.
I, John Von Aiken.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of?
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Class IV.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If everyone's sworn, I will now take nominations for chairman.
I nominate John Von Aiken to be chairman of this planning board.
Second?
I accept nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
What I was doing. All in favor? Second? Do you have a second?
I'll second, Hernandez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman takes over.
I think we still need to vote. We still need to vote as chair. We're still in a roll call.
Do we?
Yes. We need a roll call appointing him chair.
All right. Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken, Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman takes over.
I have to move from the fun side of the room.
This is the fun side.
What are you talking about?
Okay, at this time, I will accept nominations for vice chair.
Make a motion that Tom Dinsmore be vice chair?
Second, Frigieri.
We have a second? Frigieri?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Let's take...
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Roll call.
We have a motion from Mr. DePiero, who's the second?
Me, Hernandez.
Judy Hernandez. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken. Ms. Vealy.
That's gonna take a little getting used to.
Oh my God, after that first time. I'll never live it down. Sorry.
Okay, roll call on the nomination. I'm sorry? That was a motion to close, then we need a roll call to on the nomination itself.
Okay, all this procedure, right? Okay, I guess then we'll need a roll call on the nomination for Mr. Dinsmore?
Oh, motion. Now, motion's on the table, now we just need the roll call on the nomination.
Chairman DePiero. Oh my God, I don't know what's wrong with you. I apologize. Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Patel. Not here, Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. I believe at this time, we need to reaffirm the position of board secretary.
Mr. Riona.
With Nora Jolie.
So move, Mendel.
Second, Dinsmore.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes.
Do you have the names for the minor?
Would you like me to?
Sure.
All right.
So what you're gonna need is a motion on the table to appoint the following people to the Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee.
Would you please provide the board with the names?
Yes. Chairman, Mr. Dinsmore. Judy Hernandez. Dominic Mealy. Vinta Perewik, who's not here this evening, and Jennifer Vealy.
All right, do we have a nomination for those names?
I'll offer the nomination.
Very good. A second?
Frigieri, second.
Very good. Roll call.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. Okay. Contracts.
Right, do we have professional contracts?
I do not have them.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do the next one.
Do we have to make a motion to continue the current contract until we have contracts? Or is this...
That's probably a good idea.
Well, they're probably holdovers.
Probably.
Cover our bases then?
Yeah.
Move, we permit the holdover, continue the current contract until we have new up-to-date contracts.
And just to be clear, that'd be the contracts for board attorney, board planner, and board engineer.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
DePiero is the second? Roll call, please.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. All right, at this time, I'd like to recommend that we take a 10-minute recess.
We need a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting first.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn the reorganization.
So move, Dinsmore.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Voice vote's fine.
Voices.
Voice.
Voice vote. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, very good. We're adjourned.
And now we will begin the regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. So, this meeting is being called. The announcement has been made with adequate notice. That the meeting being conducted is in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 ATSEC of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Roll call first.
Okay.
Roll call.
Nora, can we have the roll call?
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Ms. Vealy.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Flawless, Nora.
We're getting there. The reason for a lot of the reorganization that we're seeing, more than usual, is because we lost a friend in the last few weeks, Bob Keller, who was a dear friend to us, and... And his passing was too soon. I know he taught me a lot. Came on this board very green and wide-eyed, and he provided guidance and leadership for myself and for many of you as well. And I'd like to invite all of you who wish to say a few words about Bob. And then we'll have a moment of silence. Would anybody like to speak?
You might want to begin with the mayor.
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
So, when December 20 rolled around, we here in Parsippany, we lost a friend and a mentor in Bob Keller. The fire department lost a firefighter. The Kiwanis Club lost a Kiwanian. The Sharing Network, which does a lot for donating organs, lost a very strong advocate. The Parsippany United Methodist Church lost a deacon. And to some of us, Bob was simply just a friend. But he was our planning board chairman, and it was very important to him, being planning board chairman and helping to bring in this master plan that we'll get adopted tonight and introduced tonight. Bob and I had talked about this from the beginning, that we wanted to preserve our neighborhoods. We wanted to plan for the future, to protect this township. We wanted to be smart about what we were going to do as far as development, because we knew it was hard to fight it, but perhaps we could curb it and control it and stop a tsunami from coming in. But most importantly, to do what we could to preserve and protect this township. Side note, John. Bob and I talked about who he would want to replace him. And it was you. And tonight in the master plan, there's gonna be a new preface that we put together to commemorate our beloved and departed chair. The little ditty that was put together is gonna read like this. "In loving memory of J. Robert Bob Keller, the 2020 Township Parsippany Hills Master Plan is hereby dedicated to Planning Board Chairman J. Robert Bob Keller. Bob devoted over 20 years of his life to serving our community on the Planning Board and as chairman. Presided over the drafting of this master plan. The adoption thereof just after his untimely passing underscores the seriousness and respect that multiple administrations held for his thoughtful vision of Parsippany's future. His guidance and knowledge were invaluable in the crafting of this plan, and the themes and ideas contained herein are a product of his care and concern for our community. Although he will not have the opportunity to experience the fruits of his labor, his spirit is embodied in this document. Through the implementation of the master plan, the residents of Parsippany Troy Hills will continue to benefit from the efforts of this selfless leader for many years to come." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If any other members of the board would like to say any words, they're welcome to at this time.
If I may.
Mr. Pierre.
I've served on the Planning Board on and off for the past 30 years, and I served with Bob for many, many years. I wasn't a Kiwanian, I was a Rotarian, but we respected each other, we worked well together, and we will all feel his loss.
I came on the board about 10 years ago, and he was there, and he... He and I just hit it off right away, knowing that what was important was what was important and good for Parsippany, not for what any individual or group wanted. It was what the town needed that was important, and he was a friend. Would have difficulty saying more. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I've known Bob too for about a dozen years in many different aspects of Parsippany, of whether it's on committees or just as a friend. And he was a man of integrity, a great family man, and a great civil servant, and who will be missed, and my condolences to his family.
Anybody else at this time?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Carlson.
I knew Bob for well over a decade, and certainly got to know him very well over the past five to six years. It was a real delight to be able to serve as his board attorney. While he very proudly served as chair of this board, I think we'll always remember how he presided over these meetings and would tell us that, you know, sometimes meetings can get a little bit out of hand. I don't wanna say out of hand, but they, people can start talking and chatting and inserting themselves. And he always wanted this board to conduct itself with the decorum that's fitting for Parsippany. In dealing with him, you know, we always had several conversations before every meeting, and whether it was him or Vice Chairman Dinsmore, they both had this common refrain. When we're trying to decide how to go about doing something and decisions tough to be made, it was always easy that he would break it down, what's best for Parsippany? And that's all he ever wanted to know. He was involved in politics, but he was never a politician. I learned so much from him, and I would say I'm gonna miss him, but I miss him already.
Go ahead, Ms. Bob.
Well, I did not know Bob as long as many of you did, but I was grateful that when I came on, when he came on as chairman as well. And he was really, just really kind to me and showed me a lot and informed me a lot about the township. And I worked with him closely on the master plan, and his grit and determination, particularly in the last six months, in making sure he was coming to the meetings and he was prepared and he really cared about what was happening here, it was really admirable. I mean, he at one point called me to talk about the master plan, and he was in the hospital, but he just was bored and wanted to talk about the master plan. I just, I couldn't believe that, and it really is a loss for this board and I think for the township as a whole.
Okay. You know, just as a personal note, I hope to continue all the procedures in the spirit of how Bob would do, in doing what's best for Parsippany. I know that all of the people here share that idealism, and will continue that activity on this board, so. With that said, I think we could use a 10-minute breather to collect ourselves and prepare for the second half of the meeting, where we will do the adoption of the master plan and then move on with the remainder of the agenda. Would anybody care to make a motion?
So move, Mendel.
Second, Dinsmore.
You can just call a 10-minute recess.
Okay. 10-minute recess then. Thank you, everyone.
We will reconvene at 5 minutes after 8:00.
So many more papers now.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the master plan. Ms. Favate, would you present?
Yes, the presentation will be very, very brief. You have before you the draft dated today for the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Master Plan. We, as we discussed at the last couple of meetings, we made some changes based on the comments we received at the public hearing back in November. We received comments at the hearing, and we also received follow-up emailed comments, and we basically compiled all of those. We previously discussed with the board the response to those comments, and we also cleaned up, you know, some typos and things like that. So what you have before you, and we sent you last week, is a draft that should reflect all of those changes. And I think really the only item for tonight is the addition of the dedication language as presented by the mayor. Otherwise, without any further comments, I think it's ready to consider for adoption, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the board?
Well, I went through 140 pages in the PDF and the email that Nora sent us. I actually don't have a copy of it here in front of me, but the email was... My comments are, it was a hell of a job. Oh my God.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was very thorough. It looks as good as we were all hoping for.
Thank you.
So, you know. I'd be more than happy to move adoption, but there may be other comments before we...
We need to open to the public first.
Yes.
If there are any comments, then open to the public.
Any other board members care to comment? All right, at this point then, I'd like to open up for the general public to comment on the master plan. All right, seeing nobody come forward, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the master plan.
Motion, Frigieri.
Second, Dinsmore.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think Susan Favate and BFJ Planning deserve a round of applause for that accomplishment.
I thank you all again for all your help, and to Mr. Dinsmore, who, with Mr. Keller, drove me around in a van very early in the process, and my head was spinning, keeping track of all the office parks. But I think I know it a lot better now, and I think we've hopefully come up with something that can work for the township, so appreciate all the hard work from all of you.
All right, thank you very much. This time, we'll move on to the remainder of our agenda. We have application number 19:517. Morris Corporate Center 4 LLC, 10120 Cherry Hill Road, block 136, lots 44 and 76, for preliminary and final major site plan.
Just for purposes of record, it's Morris Corporate Center 6.
6, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Coakley, Fluff and Apollo Foley, on behalf of the applicant. I think before we start, there's something to put on the record with respect to a few property owners within 200 feet who received notice but didn't, apparently did not, you know, receive it until perhaps 10 days ago or so. And so, we've agreed not to complete the hearing tonight, that we would go ahead with the witnesses and, but not ask for a vote this evening.
Would you like to come forward, councilman? On behalf of that property owner?
There's two, actually.
Oh, of course. Oh, if there's two, would they both come? Thank you.
Yes, my name is John Goldsmith from Buchanan, Gersoll, Rooney. And we represent Ferry Properties, the owner of two properties that, one of which borders, separated by a pond, I think it's left, four. Frankly, we're closed. It's an international company, they're closed the week between Christmas and New Year's. The notice went out December 23rd and I can only say that it didn't hit the Council's, in-house Council's desk till today, so I got a call about 3 o'clock. So we would appreciate the courtesy afforded by the Board and Mr. Coakley's part and we will get on with our review and if we have any questions, we'll get back.
You had four hours to get ready.
I did, but I was at home and that means about opening three emails with my technical skills, so I can't do anything more than that.
And we, we agreed also to provide them with a whole set of the application so they could look at it.
Thank you. And someone from UPS is here too, I believe.
Right, UPS too.
Hi, Cecilia Lassner from Silverstone, Ambrose. Here on behalf of UPS. Likewise, we did, my client did not get the notice. I'm sure it's somewhere in Atlanta, Georgia, but we have not been able to track it down. So we just learned about this at 5 o'clock, so I only had two and a half hours.
They tripped the call you guys.
But we do appreciate the courtesy, not vote tonight.
Now, if I may, my understanding is it's been worked out between the applicant and the neighbors that, again, that there'll be no vote on the application tonight so that they'll have time to review it and decide if they want to proceed with anything. Mr. Coakley, are you, are you willing to bring your witnesses back for a second hearing for the opportunity for cross-examination, if any?
Yes, if requested.
Yeah, and I'll ask the property owners, the neighbors, let us know which, if any, of those witnesses you want so none of them are brought back here unnecessarily.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Very well. And we, we will be having a question and comment period as well?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, we can open to the public tonight, assuming we get through all the witnesses.
Very good.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, as I noted, Kevin Coakley, Colle Foley on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for...
Does he have to be sworn in?
No. No, okay. For 325 unit apartment building at the intersection of Upper Pond Road and Cherry Hill Road. You know, the, just giving you a little bit of history, it was, SJP Properties was the main developer of the park and they are affiliated with Morris Corporate Center 6. So it is a continuation of their interest in the park. The last major development in the park was the UPS property that was developed a few years ago for a couple hundred thousand square feet and that's at the period of time that Upper Pond Road was, was built. So we're here tonight as a result of discussions with the municipality over the last year or so concerning building this apartment use and also to, to help satisfy the municipality's need for affordable housing. The site in question was the former corporate headquarters of BASF, which had 120,000 square foot building there that was demolished about 15 or 20 years ago. There's some remnants of that site, but basically the site is, is vacant. The Board gave an approval for development of the site in 2000 and then again in 2006 and that was extended for a 345,000 square foot office building, so much, much bigger structure than what's planned here and for about 1,100 parking spaces, so it's again more parking spaces than was, than is proposed now. So the, the name of the, the development is the Morrison. As I noted, 325 units with 162 in one building, 163 in the other, 20% of which will be affordable. The parking is approximately 600 parking spaces of which about 268 would be, will be indoor parking, the rest would be parking, parking field and there'll be some bank parking as well. You'll hear some testimony about that. We don't believe that there are any variances in connection with the application. You'll hear three witnesses this evening. Joseph Fleming, who's a civil engineer with PSNS, who's been the site engineer here for the Fiziki organization for many, many years, very familiar with the park, has done all the principal buildings in the park. Stuart Johnson is an architect who will give you the rundown of the designs of the buildings and the, all of those features. And Gary Dean is a traffic expert who will compare the, basically the traffic for the use of, as an office park versus the residential use. And also will discuss the general nature of traffic in the area and I think it's important in that regard is the construction of, of the extension of Upper Pond Road to the, to the light and how that has facilitated traffic in the park. We, we'd like to have marked, before we start, is a letter that I've, I've sent to Ms. Favate concerning the affordable housing commitment on the project that she requested and that has been provided to her and we'd like to just have that, that letter marked as, as P1.
We go by A if you would, so A1 would be great.
And then there's a couple of housekeeping matters. We do need a, a waiver for the scale of the survey and we also need a waiver for the mature trees that will be uprooted by the development, that there will be some testimony justified in that. But with, with that brief introduction, unless you have some questions, we'll call my first witness.
At this point, we...
Okay. At this point, I, I'd like Ms. Favate to go over the completeness of the application.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also, in discussion with Mr. Carlson, we just, we determined that this, this is the first, you know, site of the seven individual sites that are within the township's Affordable Housing Plan and so we thought it would be good to refresh the memory of those who were, you know, involved in that process or those who, you know, have, have not been involved in the planning for the affordable housing. So this is an inclusionary development site, which means that a portion of it is affordable and a portion of it is market rate. As I said, it's the first of the seven, so we'll be going through this process again, I, I assume. And for those who aren't familiar with the affordable housing picture in, in New Jersey, the township, like all municipalities, has a constitutional mandate to provide its fair share of affordable housing for the region and the township has met that obligation over the decades in the first two rounds of the COA, the Council on Affordable Housing process. When it came to the third round, however, there was litigation that ensued and this was not in the township, this was statewide, litigation from the Fair Share Housing Center challenging the rules of the Council on Affordable Housing. Basically, the rules were thrown out. This culminated in a March 2015 New Jersey Supreme Court decision, which put the affordable housing process back into the courts. So we have stayed in the courts ever since. As part of that court order from 2015, Parsippany, like all municipalities, were required to file what's called a declaratory judgment by July 2015, which the township did, which basically bound them to prepare a, a housing plan to meet the obligation and at the same time granted temporary immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits, which means that they were, they were shielded from developers coming in and building at a scale that's out of keeping with township because they were providing affordable housing. So that, that was a good development for the township and the question then became of, well, what is the number? Further litigation ensued, again, not just with the township, but with all of New Jersey, to determine the appropriate methodology for reaching the number, the obligation. That was the next few years of the process. And basically that culminated in March 2018 when Judge Jacobson in Mercer County, which was the first location where a trial actually happened on this, and she came up with the methodology, she and the experts came up with the methodology that essentially has been accepted statewide. It has not been challenged and it reflects the court's statewide methodology for affordable housing. And what that did for Parsippany was it established that the township's obligation in this current round, the third round, which goes to 2025, so we're only five years away from the end of it, that the township's obligation is 1,314 affordable units. Now, that was a lot better than the, just over 2,800 units that Fair Share Housing Center initially thought, proposed for the township. So we're down to 1,314. And then, after that, the Township's Affordable Housing Planner, Burgess Associates, completed what's called a vacant land adjustment, which basically looks at what is the realistic development potential or RDP for the township based on the vacant land or the actual developable land that's available. And that analysis yielded a realistic development potential of 857 units, which was actually later revised downward to 845. So again, a market improvement from 1,300 or so units, but 845 is the number that has been accepted by the settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center, which was reached back in April. And that is the number that the township has to meet in the next five years, essentially. So the question then became, how is, how is the township going to do that? So basically, over the last 18 months, and Mr. Coakley alluded to it, the township's professionals have been working with, with potential developers, with property owners, with other professionals to come up with the toolbox, you know, the tools in the toolbox that we will use to meet that obligation. And there's a lot of tools that, that the Council on Affordable Housing has, has offered. So there are obviously inclusionary, inclusionary developments like this one tonight. There are 100% affordable projects. There's what's called a market to affordable program where you take existing rental units and you buy them down and you make them affordable, indeed restrict them, so you don't have to actually build new units. There's accessory apartments, there's group homes and overlay zoning districts. So there's a whole range of, of options. And those were put together in a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which was adopted by the township in August 2019. This Board is familiar with that because as part of that process, you also adopted a master plan reexamination report in August 2019, which essentially affirmed all of the, the proposals within that housing plan. The next step was the Township Council then adopted implementing ordinances for the various sites in the Affordable Housing Plan, which includes this one tonight. And those were adopted in the fall of 2019. So throughout that entire process, there were various presentations made to the public. There were at least two to this Board, there was one made to the Board of Adjustment, there were several to Township Council. There were also public hearings done as part of the adoption of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and the master plan reexamination, as well as the Affordable Housing ordinances. And then the master plan that you just adopted tonight essentially reaffirms what was already in the reexamination report from August. So it, it all reaffirms the various affordable housing proposals. And all of this background is important, I think, for the public to understand is that the use of multifamily residential and the density and the number of stories, height, all, all of that, those sort of big picture parameters have been determined as part of the implementing, implementing ordinances. The zoning is basically in place for the affordable housing that's, that's being proposed. What's before the planning board tonight is the site plan review. So determining, you know, what's the best way to go about this development, what are the details, how can we make this as positive a development as possible? So it's, it's essentially, it's a zoning compliant application, as Mr. Coakley said, it does not appear to require any variances. So this is a site plan application and, and it's, it's basically been accommodated in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan at 325 units. So that's kind of where we are. Did you want to add anything?
I think you added everything that I otherwise would have.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and now on to waivers.
Yes, yes.
Completeness. Mr. Coakley stole my thunder a bit. There were, really, I, I determined only one waiver requested, which was the scale of the map, I'm sorry, scale of the survey only. The survey uses a slightly different scale than what's required and we recommended that waiver. We did also ask for the number and type of trees that are proposed to be removed and that was indicated as being provided in a testimony. It's actually already been provided in some of the documentation that you have. So that's, that's not a waiver requirement, that's just a testimony. Otherwise, the application is complete.
Oh, that doesn't happen very often.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the waiver from Form 5, Item 5, noted in the report from the planner.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Session, Mr. DePiero. Roll call, please.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. All right, you may call your first witness.
Mr. Funt. Let me hand this up to you, I marked it.
Thank you.
This is a first for me. I've never had to ask someone with a crutch on their right side to raise their right hand, oh, there we go, okay.
So I've gone through two knee replacements, third one's on its way, so I'm very...
Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Joseph Fleming, F-L-E-M-I-N-G.
Would you give the Board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts and Pennsylvania. This is my 43rd year of engineering experience and after I started, my first day at Jinx, started on the Parsippany project and it's been a long time. And I am the first executive vice president of PSNS and I was an advisor to the dean, the engineering dean at NJIT for 14 years, I just retired. I still go down and teach and give lectures and I serve the American Society of Civil Engineers Industry Leaders Council.
Okay, does the Board accept the credentials?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. You may proceed.
Here's the other trick though, you're gonna need to speak into a microphone. David.
You know, we have a microphone on and stands behind you, if it's any easier.
No, no, that's okay, I'll, I'll sit, I just have to, David Mark, if you can help me with the boards, then I'll just stay seated. Okay. Excellent. So what I'd like to do is just give you an orientation of, of the project from the beginning, just be a little repetitive. The drawing that's, that's up is our drawing, C4, it's existing conditions and demolition plan, it's a little difficult to see. But as Mr. Coakley indicated, this site did serve BASF quite, quite some time ago. The building was raised in the mid 1990s, but the service parking, which is in this, this area right here, I'm using my laser pointer to, to indicate that area, has remained. Property was, as indicated, approved for office complex with parking. I was the engineer of record for that particular application and, and that project did not move forward. We have gone through renewals of those, those original approvals, but nothing has happened since. When we got approval for this site, it was tied to Morris Corporate 5, which is the UPS project. And with that, that tandem approval, there were a number of improvements that were necessary for both projects. So those coordinated improvements included the construction of Upper Pond Road, to Upper Pond Road, all the way down to Cherry Hill Road, including the traffic signal that exists. It also included a more regional approach to stormwater management for the overall campus, which made use of both the Upper Pond and the Lower Pond. And it also took care of a lot of the water and sewer utility connections. So many of these, these improvements that were tied to those original improvements were, were finished with the UPS facility. You know the next drawing, drawing C5, this site to bench this plan? So what I'd like to do now is just go through, what are the, what were the project goals? Obviously, this is a residential plan now coming into what was an office environment. So the application inspired to build two multifamily, five-story apartment buildings, provided 325 units, 162 units in, in building A, 163 units in building B. Building, I'm trying to remember. So this is building B, building A. The parking for the site complies with the Residential Site Improvement Standard, 608 spaces, including 18 ADA compliant spaces. Proposed plan makes use of the massing, as you remember, I, I, this is the flat area that was, that's, that's paved, the office building was down in this area, so we're actually working within the confines of that original disturbed area for BASF. And so with that, we were avoiding the wetlands, there are wetlands on this side, on the western side of the site, the ponds are, are down to the south and we have some very heavily wooded areas, basically to the east. We're protecting, for the most part, the wooded area to the east. We were actually increasing the buffers on the wetland side to the west and basically taking care of those natural attributes of, of topography and trees. We're also be mindful of, of the view sheds that we have within and, and from looking back towards this new residential community. Beyond accommodating the building and parking components, the massing effort led to an overall orientation of, of the community buildings, the principal driveway approach and the perimeter edge treatments. So from a building perspective, we originally had, the plan was originally had a north-south access going through the two buildings and we found that by shifting, by rotating it, we were able to, to do a number of things. We're able to afford a little bit more protection for, or take care of some of this paved area that we don't, no longer needed and restore that to, to a landscape buffer. We're able to basically optimize the solar orientation for the pool deck in the southerly building and I'll leave that to the architect to talk about what's, what that amenity is. And, and we also pushed the entire package to the south. Now, so when we did that, we, we basically opened up the opportunity for additional buffering between the duly completed Upper Pond Road and, and the buildings themselves. The principal driveway entrance, it was, it was important to us to create a sense of arrival, a sense of procession from Upper Pond Road. What we, what didn't want to do is just come in the back end of, from Upper Pond Road and come into the community. We want to create something where, as you come into this community, you kind of drop into the arrival courts and that's exactly what we've done. So coming off of Upper Pond Road, this is the principal entrance, it rises a short distance and then drops down and comes back up to our arrival courts. So it's a very graceful, graceful approach to both buildings. We also do have a secondary point of access, which is necessary, and that's off of Upper Pond Road on the western side of the site. Finally, recognizing the, the landscape perimeter, the parking program evolved into a very efficient single bay of parking that minimized the overall development footprint and maximized the trees to be preserved. Even the arrival... Even the arrival courts were put on an impervious coverage diet to maximize green opportunities. We really tried to consolidate things to the maximum extent possible and we did. If you compare the total coverage for this application versus that which the board approved back in 2008, there's a significant reduction in the overall total impervious coverage. The mirror, the mirror image courtyards in front of the buildings, they'll be a little better to see on, on next, on another exhibit. But they have been designed to accommodate drop-offs and pickups, United States Postal Service and FedEx deliveries. And most important, this is very important, the pedestrian connectivity between the two buildings. Inside, it's a little difficult to see on, on this particular exhibit, but this is included in your package. The 268 parking spaces provided in the two, in the, in the two garage areas helped minimize the overall development footprint and the impervious coverage. These spaces may be assigned by the property manager at a later date, that'll be their decision. Remaining 340 exterior parking spaces are approximate to the building, which helps, again, reduce walking distances and minimizes the total impervious coverage. There was a concern about the landbank parking. So the landbank parking is down in, in the southeast corner. So we have 31 spaces. And what the applicant is, is looking to do is make sure that we have adequacy of parking for this facility. I believe RSIS is right. I've been working with RSIS for a long time and, and for the most part, you know, particularly for a community this size, it is, it provides the right numbers. However, there are occasions, there are communities for which things get a little tight. So if we were in an urban setting where if things got tight and things just moved to another neighborhood or another parking garage, it's not that big of a deal. When we're here in a suburban setting, if, if all of a sudden we, we are running tight and we have no fallback but for people to park illegally or to park in areas that they shouldn't, that becomes a problem for the management. And so what, what I was asked to do is make sure that we provided some safety valve that in the event that all of the best estimates for RSIS kind of fell short here, we had the opportunity, or the management had the opportunity to remedy that without having hardships within the community. So we have built in this safety valve. We have accounted for all the impervious coverage for the ultimate build-out of this, of this parking. However, from a, a green design perspective, it, it was our, our best guess, stick to the RSIS design level and basically green up this area. So again, the impervious coverage is accounted for in the design, but it's just gonna be green lawn. And hopefully it remains green lawn for the life of, of the community. Again, there, there was a question of, well, when, when, when do we decide whether or not to turn this into pavement or not turn it into pavement? Again, the management of, of the building, especially with SJP at the helm, I would expect them to make the right decision. If there are pushes and tightness in, in the parking or people are forced to, to park in random areas that they shouldn't, then they'll know to, to activate these, these spaces. I should also mention that all roadways and driveways have been designed to accommodate school buses, your Parsippany fire apparatus and delivery trucks. Next drawing is, drawing C6, the grading plan. And these are all drawings that are in your package. They're all dated November 8th, 2019. So, so with the opportunities that I discussed at, at the massing plan, which is very, very important, the grading plan actually became easy for us. We wanted to make sure that we had easy gradients for both parking and for pedestrian movement around the facility. With the established development grades, the plan also creates landscape berms and transition slopes. So one of the most important ones, we have an undulating landscape berm here between the development and Upper Pond Road. And we also have some additional berming that's now gonna be occupying an existing paved area, getting rid of pavement and creating more, you know, landscape buffering on that, that north-west corner. The landscape berms will have subtle gradients for the most part. The steeper components with no more than one foot vertical versus three foot horizontal. We have a lot of soil to spoil at this point. And so we have an opportunity to kind of build these berms up so they can really be meaningful landscape elements. We don't want them to turn into Army Corps of Engineers dykes or, or, you know, things. We, we want these things to feel like a golf course, you know, undulating berm. And so that's, that's what's in the plan. While the grading plan sought to avoid structural walls, the southerly push that I mentioned early ago, again, we pushed this thing to the south. We do have retaining wall in this south corner. And so, and the reason for that south wall is we have Cousins Dam, the dam that separates the Upper Pond from the Lower Pond. And we, it was necessary for us to structurally kind of keep that, that grading transition away from, from the dam area. We do have a, a gentle ramp coming down for the purposes of maintenance and serviceability of, of the dam, but we needed a, a wall to do that. So this modular block wall, we, we have a lot of experience with modular block walls. At our maximum height, we have a 10-foot exposed surface. But for the most part, it, it feathers out to, to zero, to 10. So the average, average height for this entire length is, is less than six feet. We have given ourselves a generous amount of room on top of the wall so that we can provide sufficient plantings. And I'll, I'll talk more about them when I get to landscape plan. But we have plans that, you know, plantings that make it a little bit difficult for kids and, and other people to kind of come to the edge of the steeper portions. And we also have cascading forsythia and others that kind of drop down the face that basically create a living green wall as opposed to a hard masonry surface. So again, having that, having sufficient room for landscaping is important and that's what's incorporated in this plan. As I mentioned, at the onset grading, it was important, so we had relatively gentle grades throughout this, you know, through the paved areas and the walkable areas. And they're basically arranged from 1% to 4%, a very comfortable gradient. Next, next exhibit. This is drawing C7, it's our drainage plan. So this plan works in concert with the previously developed stormwater management plan and makes use of the two already designed and permitted constructed outfalls. Those outfalls, one outfall is over here, the other outfall is in this direction. So again, this is part of the original plan. They were permitted by the DEP and they were constructed.
So there's no, no change there?
No change. We're, we're making use of, of those, of those connections. And so with the UPS application, which the board approved a couple of years ago, there were some modifications to the outlet structures for both the Lower Pond and the Upper Pond. Those were reviewed and approved by DEP. And they, from a master plan, regional approach, now take, take care of full peak flow attenuation. In other words, reducing the rate of runoff to the pre-existing rate for this area of, of the, of the site. And, and we are just kind of dropping in this development in full compliance of what has been already approved. Additional peak of flow attenuation was provided by a 48-inch diameter detention culvert. We found it necessary for, you know, because of the balancing of flows between the two outfalls, I needed to, to slow water coming down to this particular one. So it's a little bit of a trick. We take a, a large diameter sewer, 48-inch diameter sewer, we let the runoff come to it and we basically reduce the rate of runoff leaving that culvert. It fills up to a certain point and then slowly discharges through that outfall over a longer period of time. The rate is reduced. We just reduce it, reduce the, we increase the time that it takes to, to get released. So again, while the site stormwater management plan was designed and approved on a regional basis, we wanted to augment it. There were a couple of things that we thought we could do in the process to make it a little better. Actually, your rain garden outside is kind of, it kind of, I saw it for the first time a couple of years ago and I thought, gee, I, I think I can do some, I can use that here. So we have four of them. We're providing four rain gardens in, in these two corners. It's a little bit larger than what you have, but there's no reason why we can't augment the ability to take runoff from the impervious areas, run it through those rain gardens. We can get a little better quality. The soils here are excellent for that purpose and, and the plants that we could have in there will flourish under those hydrologic conditions.